Okay, Ms. Alvera, Mr. Delgado, Ms. Spite, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Aratelli?
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Announcement of compliance with sunshine rule?
Yes, we are in compliance.
Welcome to visitors, I see no visitors. The reading of the minutes, November 19th, 2013. Want to take a minute to read that?
Could I ask a favor?
Sure.
When you put the package together, email it, could you put the stuff in the order that we... Like, the bills come first?
Right.
And then the directors report it? And it make it easier on the computer to scroll through?
Sure.
If it was in the same order, thank you.
Okay. The agenda sequence.
Yeah, exactly, yes, that's the word, thank you, that's the word I was looking for. I move acceptance minutes.
Select.
Okay. Mr. Freeman?
Okay.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes. Um, treasurer's report. We'll table that until the treasurer comes in.
Yes.
Same thing with the bills, we'll wait till the treasurer shows up. Reports from standing committees, no committee meetings.
Correct.
Uh, special committee, no meetings. The library director's report.
Okay. Highlighted some of the things that we're working on, including the finally settling on the security services contract and the cleaning care contract, which has been signed. Uh, Mr. Whitley just countersigned it, so that's good to go, starting January 1st, um, at forty-seven thousand a year. They were not happy, but they agreed it was the right thing to do. The cleaning company, they were not happy, but they realized it was the right thing to do.
It was their... They acknowledged it was their fault.
They acknowledged that. He kept saying, "Well, can you make me a deal? Can I get the contract the next time around?" Like, "I can't do any of that. That's why I'm getting jailed," you know what I mean? So, you know, they were congenial about it, though. You know what I mean? They weren't angry, they weren't aggressive. We were a little concerned that they might be a little testy with us, but, you know, they were... They were fine, you know?
Quick question. When they put those out for bid, I believe we said the last time that all of the bidders have an opportunity to see what was presented? So, I just don't get it.
Well, they may not have bid the last time around, so they had made... They were just making whatever they thought was reasonable, except they didn't read the fine print, which says how many hours someone had to be in the building. They just saw, you know, this is building has to be cleaned, we can have two people in there, whip them in and out in a couple of hours where we want someone...
But what I'm saying is a big discrepancy between the difference from the higher bidders to his bids, so I mean...
Yes. But, you know, the current contractor that we had, the one we just got rid of, his bid was more in the mid-range of where most of the bids were, just that there were two that were very low, looking very competitive, but also very ill-informed, in the sense that they didn't read the specs carefully enough.
Okay. So, the trick is going to be to keep my top end and be sure it's left in the corner?
Yeah, yes, yes, right, right. Okay. Um, we are moving ahead with the bookmobile. We had the materials out of there, we're still waiting to hear from the city, though, about what's going on.
Question, what were the city...
The books in the bookmobile, they've been there for like ten years.
Still there?
They were there. We had deleted them as catalog items that the patrons would see, but they were still there. What was shocking about them, we expected to go over there and find that they were mildew, dusty, you know, totally disgusting. The place was like those airtight seals. I mean, the things had less dust on them than some of the books on our reference collection, and nothing smelled, everything was really clean. Mainly what we're doing with them is, um, we're going to see if some of the children's ones are still worth putting into the collection, but most of them are going to end up at the Elmore Book Sale, because they're ten or more years old. Books that were fourteen, they're books are long since not bestsellers. Um, so we're waiting to hear from the city about the auction, we want to get that off our vehicle insurance cost for next year. And there's been approval, of course, of the minimum wage, so we'll have to discuss that later on. Buildings and grounds, we completed the work on the chiller with Carrier, so we're good for... I don't know.
Time being?
Time being, yes, I think it's five years. I think it's five years. They were trying to sell me on getting a whole new chiller, but I said, "That's nice for now." We finally took care of the problem with the elevator, that's been taken care of, there are new locks on the bathroom doors of the children's room, because those were not working, and kids were sitting there having a real issue. We've completed all the work involved with the fire inspection, so we are good and clear, we passed everything we needed to do, including the pump, which had not been checked or inspected in something like twenty-five years, which is... So, that's pretty good. Um, the hand dryer in the public men's bathroom, I was told was not working, so now it's working properly. Oh, okay, good. Um, and there was a replacement toilet installed in the staff women's bathroom. There's... If you came in either door, you should have seen our new signage, okay, which is like a sticky, that's been adhered to the door itself. Um, it was paint before, and we were able to scrape that off, and the hours were wrong because they still said we opened at nine on Friday, so now the hours reflect what our actual hours are, which is a nice improvement, and the sign looks nice. Um, we're still working on the cracked exterior window in the children's room, someone from a glass company was here today, they're also looking at replacing the interior windows upstairs. I didn't know that that's what that was, but now I know. Um, we're also looking at repurposing some of the gray hanging signs that used to be throughout the building. We can very delicately scrape back the old letters and get new letters put on top, or just take off some letters that aren't relevant, you know, directions that aren't relevant. I particularly want the one back over the World Language Collection, because people have no idea that that's there, so we're working on getting those signs repurposed, because they were expensive.
The water fountain on the third floor?
Yes.
Well, it's been fixed, I haven't been over there.
Oh, I don't think it's been fixed, that is something Paolo wants to take a look at, he wants to take a look at it, see if there are parts that he can replace, and then we can decide if we need a whole new one, or what's going on, but he... Because of the fire inspection and now the snow, but it's there, it's there, okay? We have gotten a matching grant, I believe that's twenty thousand from the city, or from us, and twenty thousand in grant funds to fix the railway street entrance, okay?
Wait, well, this is from the city, this is separate from this?
Well, that's what it said, yeah, separate from...
From the county?
Then, well, that's actually this, yeah, but it does say it's a matching grant.
From the county?
The city is matching it.
The city...
Oh, the city is matching?
The city itself is actually matching? I didn't want to make assumptions that way.
The city is matching the county.
Okay, oh, that's great.
So, we don't have to come up with...
We don't have to. Seven forty thousand dollars.
Okay. Next question, my question was going to be now, how do we match?
Yeah, right, right.
Okay.
Excuse me, when you say update and repair the railway street entrance, what do you mean exactly by that?
Wouldn't you love an automatic door?
Oh, I was hoping I would hear that, oh!
That's what we'd like to do, we'd like an automatic door that slides to the... To one side or the other, and then inside again, slides to one side or the other, if we can do that.
Oh, that would be... I was afraid to even bring it up to say anything.
Yes, yes. It's also the floor there, too, the floor is, you know, that's in very bad shape, so...
Oh, that's excellent, excellent.
Hopefully, based upon the estimates that were done last year, that will be sufficient to cover that. We were hoping to get the hundred thousand plus to do the public bathrooms downstairs, but that did not come to be, so we'll have that...
That needs to...
Yeah, oh, I know, oh, I know, it's awful, I know, I know. But, you know, next go-round, next chance, okay? We're working on our copier lease still, we had another vendor coming on Monday, we have another vendor coming tomorrow, but we hope to sign off on a new lease, copier lease, by the end of the year, yes.
Excuse me, how many vendors have we changed?
For what, for what, with different things?
I'm just saying, in general, the cleaning is...
The cleaning, we start a new contract in January, um, security will start a new contract in January.
But is security a new company?
Yes.
Oh, that's why I'm asking, you know, so we change...
Yes.
So, that's a new company?
Yeah, their name is Agri, something like that. They're located in Clifton, which is actually nice, they're not so far away, yeah, okay.
And you mentioned, or is it that they sometimes take the people that are existing?
Yes, well, the ones that we recommend, and we don't make a blanket recommendation necessarily, you know, because Gladys has been here a long time, and she knows the building, and we really have trust and confidence in her with other people.
Got you. That's interesting, I have two questions. I didn't... I mean, so ultimately, they're transitioning from one company to another?
Yes, 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 yeah, right, so then on an army roll, yeah. Well, they can, they certainly can, yes.
The companies we had up until now, in this, in these instances, they bid on the contracts too?
Uh, yes, in both instances, cleaning and cost...
And they weren't awarded it?
Right, they were too high, right, right. So, we saved lots of money.
There's no requirement...
No, that's terrific.
There's no requirement that they keep the people, right?
No, 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 that's strictly up to them, there's an advantage...
That's a wishing, isn't it?
No, God, with my work, we used to, you had to offer the incumbent employees first before you brought new people in, unless there was a reason that, you know, you didn't want them, but they have more flexibility.
Yes, yes, right. But the advantage is, of course, the people know with a job already, they don't have to train them on...
Yeah, if they're good employee, you want to hold onto them, right.
So, we're upgrading our payroll timesheet and personnel benefits software with ADP, that's... They put that aside for a little while, because they want us to go to like point-two version, version point-two, whatever that is, uh, but we're moving ahead with that. We're also looking at options for our integrated library system, our catalog system, the circulation system, that contract expires mid-year, and we're looking to see what our options are, whether to continue going with Cersei Dynix, our current vendor, or whether to look at other options, so that's...
Is that a good situation, or do we have more discretion in doing it?
I think we have, would have more discretion in that, as far as I'm aware, because I've In the situations where I've encountered that, that's not been a... Been an issue, that's, you know, that's an interesting question. Do you know more about that, Monica, than I do?
I don't, we'd have to look it up, because I don't think the library materials fall out of that need to be bid, so maybe we got out of it, but we have to check to make sure that hasn't changed.
Yeah, right, that's interesting, I haven't thought about that, but yeah, that's a decent question, you know? We're working with Boopsie on our app, as I say...
Who's Boopsie?
Boopsie's...
Yeah, I hate to say that.
I know, you don't want to say the word. Boopsie's the vendor who's selling our app, we're getting our app through a grant, a contract grant, from library in Link-N-J, it's for ten thousand dollars, and app means that if you have a smartphone, or if you have a tablet, or any other device like that, you can see the library webpage without having it be formatted for a big screen, it's formatted for a little screen.
For phone.
Yeah, yeah, so it's much more compatible with your on-the-go lifestyle, how's that?
And Boopsie is not an individual, Boopsie's a corporate name.
It's a corporate name, yes, 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 yes. But we're coming along, as I say, these little... If you can't bring it up here now, this gives the address for the test mode that it's in, if you wanted to take it home and explore it and see what it's looking right like right now, we have a... We freshened our logo that we had developed, and I showed you last month, so it's looking a lot more readable, and we really like it, and then there's a sequence of things you can look at, so it's coming along quite nicely. We also recently upgraded our technology plan for 2014 and 2016. Earlier this month, yes?
Uh, when you say upgrade the technology plan, are we...
Yes. This is part of our E-Rate requirements, we need to give them, yeah, okay.
That's something we should, we can look at.
If you would like, yes, yes, okay, all right. I can forge you a copy, would anyone else like to see that, okay?
Does the technology plan require capital funding, or any funding over and above the budget as we know it today?
No, no, it's, you know, I think of it as slightly an old-fashioned requirement to the whole E-Rate thing, because they wanted to make sure that people were in... Libraries were continuing to improve the technology they have, that they just weren't getting a bank of computers, and those would be the same computers still in place twenty years later. They want to make sure that you're keeping abreast with, you know, you get your flat screens, you're doing your other things, you're getting faster internet connectivity and all those other things. So, we just want to know if you're continuing to work and improve your system.
Right, but when you approve those systems, they cost money.
But normally, it comes from Gates Foundation, we get a lot of technology, we get out, no, we get it through the Gates Foundation, and that's how we get a lot of our technology from them. So, that's why we're like, basically, on cutting edge when it comes to technology, so it's not like a...
And then there's, some of it is just staff training, making sure staff is training, we want to get, what I want to get is some YouTube videos attached to our web cat, our catalog and things like that, so people know how to search for different things, or use our catalog, or do whatever. You know, all that fun stuff that's out there, maybe Vine is the new little, short little segmented time thing.
That is such a...
Oh, Vine, yeah.
Vine, Vine, okay, yeah, the youngest person here knows, you know?
I know it too, but it's just so ridiculous.
What's it, eight seconds?
Exactly, it's unusual from this plan, I'm talking...
No, 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 yeah, right.
We need a half a million dollars.
Right, right. What they'd want to know, though, if we needed, if we have a plan, if our computers need to be updated, or we have a plan to update, maybe ten this year, ten next year, and, you know, how does that proceed, okay? But we didn't put anything like that in the plan at this point.
But Gates Foundation is our...
Yeah, the, what was called the BTOC.
Was that less than?
Well, what they have generally done is made their stuff available to us, yeah, right, at very good prices or no prices at all, yeah.
You can't get much better than that.
Yeah, we'll scratch their... Yeah, okay. So, we had a brief problem with our email system earlier in the month, we couldn't email each other through the library, we could not get some of our programs in the library, so it kind of slowed us down for like three or four days, and some people still are trying to get up to snuggle some of the stuff that happened, but...
That's within the staff internally.
Well, yes, internally, yes, yeah, we don't really know what happened, the DNS was corrupted, that's what Edwin said, but...
What is it?
How this happened?
What is the DNS?
Domain name, domain name...
Server.
Server, okay, yeah. And how it got corrupted, he didn't, he couldn't get into it, he was completely blocked at getting into the system.
Now, it could be hackers...
That's what I said, two hackers, and he's like, "Oh," you know, he thought we were well-secured against that, but we don't know, yeah.
Well, I think government...
Yeah, it is, yeah, someone said something similar happened to me, was it DoorDaddy, whatever that company, yeah, someone had been hacked.
So, now I'm thinking about preventative internet...
Oh, yes, right, right. I don't think Edwin's totally had a chance to review what happened, to know what to do to make sure this doesn't happen again, because initially, since he couldn't get into it, he couldn't see what had caused it and what would be the potential solutions.
So, we don't have any current safeguards?
Well, we have the ones that we had in place all along, yeah, with firewalls and the other, the usual securities.
So, that's internal, it's nothing like, the contracts are like...
No, 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 right, right, yeah, right, right, yeah, yeah. But that's another reason I think everyone goes to the cloud soon.
No question. Was it just the library, or was it anybody else in city, or was anybody else affected? It was just the library?
No, it was just us, it was our server, yeah.
So, it could have been our server was old too?
Okay, all right.
The server's not that, that server's not that old.
Yeah, there's no talk of replacing it, so I don't...
We replaced it a few years ago.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah. But the next step is to go on, you know, go in the cloud, have an off-site storage.
Who knows, somebody in the middle of the Ukraine somewhere was sitting there in the...
Yeah, I know, but, you know, at this point, it's two or three years old, you know, it's not brand-new anymore, so...
Yeah, I get it. Everything's simple, it's...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Pretty simple, it'll just automatically connect right into the cloud.
But you'll have to remember all those passwords in even more.
No, you'll have to phone that, you're going to get phones it up. And then drones are going to take that.
The i5. The i5.
Yeah, it's a fingerprint, well, you don't have to put a password in or anything to open the phone.
You didn't like that, did you? The fingerprint security, I thought you didn't like that, Alexis, the fingerprint security.
I had one on my computer, about two computer, two laptops ago, and their, the reader at the time was, if you didn't get your finger directly there, it wasn't going first, so if the reader is going to, then I don't have a problem with it. But if my reader ruins...
To deliver the book.
The string.
Yes, what a great idea.
Oh, yeah.
For the shut-ins.
That's right. FedEx is doing it, FedEx is doing it.
Yeah.
But you don't have any problem with a finger login?
I just started using it, you know, so, but yeah, right, so, and as a matter of fact, Apple now, if I go in and buy something, they'll, my fingerprints can pay for it.
Oh, Lord.
Oh, no.
Oh, yes.
I'm too old-fashioned.
I like a chair.
I said, "What happens if they cut off the finger?" They said, "It won't sense the heat, so it won't register."
Wow.
Wow. Interesting, thank you for sharing, yes. We're continuing our reading, we've weeded through most of the older periodicals and the numbers, and the Dewey numbers from the zeros to the six hundreds, and we're continuing, staff is working on the Dewey seven hundreds, which is sports and entertainment, particularly seven eighties, the eight hundreds, which is literature and the arts, adult fiction and YA fiction. We've created a new display area, I don't know if anyone's come browsing through the library, but have you noticed it? Okay, we've got Christmas books there right now, if you approach from the Broad Street entrance, and you're going back to the computer help desk over on your left-hand side, on the left-hand side of the reference desk, we've cleared out the space to make a really big display area to highlight different things, and the reference department has actually created a calendar for all of 2014, what we'll put up for display, and we'll look for programs that tie into some of those displays, you know, National, whatever, like November is vegan month, so we can put up vegan, right? Isn't it appropriate?
What I always think is maybe like the expanded New York Times Bestseller List type of thing, that relate to that.
Well, what I've asked Jose to think about doing for January, I guess, would be the best books of 2013, and put all those out, because there's so many, there's the New York Times does that, NPR does that, Publishers Weekly does that, that would make a really nice display of all the best books that you have.
And then maybe possibly which ones are available from your home, or ebooks, right?
Yeah, right, right, that would be good, if we worked all that out.
Excuse me, I listened here earlier, and you may have discussed it, and I'm sorry if I'm going backwards, but how is the book sale coming up?
Um, the book sale, the first day, I know how much money they made, I don't know if I know how much money they've made to this point, but I understand that what was flying out the door was those art prints.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I told, I told one man there that someone had walked out with forty-five dollars' worth, and he got all excited, and he started piling them into a box to get them himself, what they, whoever really is interested in it is really interested in it.
Yeah, right, well, we were selling them for a very good price, though we have adjusted the price a little bit, yeah, yeah. We brought it up a little bit.
So, buy them?
Yeah, so the, yeah, so I do have a note here about the book sale, yeah, one hundred and seventy-five dollars on the first day. If you set a hundred dollars a day for ten days, that's a thousand dollars, so I, I mean, I have no idea, but you know...
And we had bad weather, we had very bad weather, too.
Very bad weather, right, right, but we have more stuff, we have more stuff to go over there that we're boxing up, as we would continue to weed from the different collections, we're sending it over there, we think they're sellable, um, and it's posted online, and it's at a place called Book Sale Finder, and it went, it's going out in our publicity too, so hopefully, you know, it's a good thing for the community, thank you, Pearl, yourself set up, I know you worked on it, so thank you very much.
Well, Roberto, Roberto Eing, who...
Okay, yes, but thank you, I hope you found some good choices for yourself, Loretta.
I did, we did.
Okay. We're set for the staff holiday lunch this coming Friday, and I do have some flyers here that invite you, I've also invited the mayor, and he has said he'll come by, I don't know that he'll eat, but he said he'll come by, so we can thank him for support of the library, which would be very nice, and...
We can lift the twelve, how do we get in?
Oh, no, we're open, we're open.
We'll be open, okay.
We're open, and it'll be upstairs on the fourth floor, okay? It's just the branches that will be closed, so they can come over, so, yeah.
Is that enough time, twelve to two, where, you know, if you're maybe quarter to twelve to two fifteen for travel time?
I did have some staff at the branches say, "Could you get a little more time?" But I said, "This is what had been approved, so we can certainly discuss that for next year."
Yeah.
Right, yeah, with travel time, I mean, it gives someone, they're supposed to have an hour for lunch.
This way, they got some time to bond.
Well, well, that's, that's what they were asking, right, right, yeah, so that should be, should be fine in that regard. We had received twenty-three hundred for the 2014 Annual Full Concert Series, that's from the Union County Cultural Heritage and Historic Foundation Commission, okay? That's a little less than the year before, but I think we'll be able to find some good new acts that will...
In the...
Yeah, yes, I think so, I think so, yes.
How many, how many concerts did that buy?
Is it six months?
Six.
Yes. An organization called Enroll America will be hosting an enrollment fair for the Affordable Health Care Act on a Tuesday evening in January and a Saturday morning in January. And we also had, kind of unexpectedly stopped by, but we knew they were coming, from Somerset County United Way, and a company called Cognosante, they are sending teams of facilitators to help people enroll, they're sending them three days a week, for full days, ten thirty in the morning till five thirty in the afternoon, to help people enroll, so they'll be here through March, and this is even before the city...
So, these navigators, these are...
Those are...
Higher navigators for?
It says federally-approved facilitators, is that what it is? I can, I have it on my desk, and I can show you.
You know, if the government's involved, they are called navigators in terms of...
Right, right, yes, as opposed to, there's the other term, which is what I think the enrollment fair people are. Again, I have the flyers over there, like I showed exactly what they do.
Blue and Foley, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. And Hoopsa, the organization that I mentioned last month about the woman who, Nayima Burke, she wants to help kids who are in high school get career-ready by doing training and presenting them with career-growing opportunities, so she's starting her program with the students on alternate Saturdays in January, and she's very dynamic, she's very engaged with the kids in the community, she's touch base with the school board, so I think this might be a really nice opportunity for us to help kids along, help kids get fresh ideas of what they can look for in life besides... You don't know what you want to be unless you're exposed to the possibilities, and I think that's what she'll help them do, she'll find new possibilities for them.
I'm not sure, she may have already reached out to the city with regards to the office on youth.[1585.12]
I think I mentioned that to Pearl. I'm not sure if she has, but I did mention that, yeah. And Monica attended a meeting of Elizabeth 350 Committee, and we're going to be doing a trivia contest, where we have one of our reference librarians hunting down obscure facts. And then people can put their answers in a little thing or email it to us online, and we'll choose at random a winner who will win a little Elizabeth 350 pen. They cost five dollars, okay? I attended an NJLA program entitled Get Stories, which is just about new ways to get your message across to the community. It's a little bit about spin, how to turn negative perceptions into positive things so we can move forward. There are some of the meetings I attended, and in fact, Monica and I went over last night to the Greater Elizabeth Chamber of Commerce Holiday Gathering, where we saw the mayor and a few other people. We exchanged a bunch of cards, which was really nice. And so it's a good, we just want to get our faces out there so people know us and they know we're the face of the library.
Did you meet Gordon Haas?
Yes, I met Gordon Haas. A few other people too. I might have to refer to their cards to tell you exactly here, but yeah, yeah, he was there. And the mayor was just coming, leaving as we came in, so we saw him. And then you have some statistics which you can read over. You can ask me questions about if you choose.
One of the meetings is a Verizon phone conference. Have you had any luck on that, or how was that?
Since we talked to them, we haven't heard anything back from them, but we have someone who seemed actually like an engaged person. He actually sounded like, oh, I understand what you're saying. Yes. And, you know, I think there were three.
That's amazing.
That's a plus.
It really, it really was. It was like, it was a real person with a real name, with a real phone number and email where we can contact him. And he will help us. I mean, he can't solve any of the issues, but he can help us liaise with the right people.
He's their navigator.
Yeah, yes, 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 yes. And, you know, and as long as he doesn't lose his job, like they cut back when they decide that customer care is not the way they want to go, we should be okay.
What is the dollar amount discrepancies that we're talking about here?
There are a couple of different.
Like double bill, weren't we?
Well, that's what it looked like.
Ostensibly.
Yeah, some of what he explained to us is that when they talk about access, there's a port to receive and a port to send, and they charge separately. Each one is two thousand dollars. Isn't that the biggest scam you ever heard? I mean, if you're going to charge us.
Well, you can't have, how can you do one without the other?
Right, so why not just say it's four thousand dollars for this line? But they don't say that. So that's one of the things where it looks like double billing. The other thing they did is some of the taxes and surcharges, USAC fees, they are very high and they match some of the other fees that had been kicked off. So it looks kind of contrived what they were doing, you know? And also, we had, for some reason, we had, they created excess accounts for us. I think we're supposed to have only one account, and they created two more accounts. And each time they set up a new account, they charges two thousand dollars for it.
Hello?
I know.
That's, that's, that's a nice.
I know. And we didn't even want these other accounts. So he has it, we have it all itemized. He knows what our issues and our complaints are, and he's, hopefully, will help us see it through.
Is Verizon necessarily the choice in terms of a bid that could be, you know, knowing that the phone industry is being regulated?
Right, right, right. That's, one of the things that Monica is working on with the E-rate is that we have to put out for bid our phone usage. You can correct me if I'm a little off-base with that, but that's pretty correct, yeah. One of the, the lines go for another year, and the phones themselves expire at the end of?
We're both three-year contracts, and next year's the last year.
Okay, but I thought one expired before the other, the phones themselves?
No, they're all, the only thing that expires is the maintenance on the phone.
Okay.
But that's all.
Okay, right. So we want to look into other options, yes, yes, including voice-over internet and those.
And let them know that we are.
I don't know that they care.
No, really, because, because a lot of times, a lot of times, they have what they call retention departments.
Oh, okay.
That's true.
Okay? And the minute you tell them that you're changing something, all of a sudden, you're talking to someone who's making a deal with you.
Yes, yes.
Because I learned that individually with the phone company, with the cable company, with everybody.
Yeah, right. And we learned that with Xerox ourselves. And we told them we want to leave their, like, right at our doorstep, saying, well, wait.
All of a sudden, they have a home.
Yeah, yeah, they love us.
Well, they like, they like to sell the name.
Well, yeah, yeah, right, 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 right. But, you know, with Verizon too, it's not just a question of price, I would think. It's a question of service. So, you know, we have a year to look into all that, but we, it's good that we have that because it may take that time to make our way through everything that we need to figure out.
And some of the taxes and stuff, we're not exempt as a fellow public?
That's the thing.
On the bills, we haven't been.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if you can, did you ask the city attorney if he could look at that and see if we have any tax exempt status?
Well, we do, we do. We do have a tax exempt status, except that they owe universal service charge fees, and that's what pays us back for the E-rate. So it does seem like they're taking this money for... Yeah, yeah. But we don't get those refunded either, so that's why they stick in.
They make sure they take.
Yeah, yeah, it kind of sticks in our pro.
Whatever the non-charge is.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars for, you know, USAC fee that we can't re, we get reimbursed for, but that's supposed to be helping us give this service to the public. Yeah, yeah.
You know, when you talk service with as much volume as you're doing with them, they should have a dedicated, and you may want to insist on this, a dedicated customer service that does all this legwork.
Yeah, yeah.
And in fact, even now, or for the future, wherever you're going to go.
Right, 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 yes.
And backup.
Yes.
You could almost put that in your bid package for the next system.
Absolutely.
Saying I want to have one point of contact.
That's what I've always, you know, and bring them in and have them, you know, when you decide on all that and have a get-to-know-you type of arrangement.
That's what they should do, but I know, right? The history of Verizon is that, that's exactly what they don't do.
But ask for it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Worst you can do is get a no.
Yeah, right, well, we're going elsewhere.
Give you a runaround.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's what was happening, yes. But we do have someone now, so that's good. Okay, so there's the statistics that you can take a look at. Visits by schools, visits by children, the computer classes that we've been offering, and items added and discarded.
I have a question.
Yes.
What is bounce rate?
Oh, what was?
Page twelve.
These are more circulation statistics. Page twelve.
Top.
Oh, I don't know what it's put on.
Yeah. Bounce rate with an email is typically, you send an email to someone and it comes back.
Oh.
Okay, so bounce rate on this, people who don't, actually don't get.
People get back the same day?
No, I'm thinking of people who don't get a hit.
Just the mouse gets sent.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
So it could be an inactive account, or it could be like a.
Oh, yes, only when it's an email, but this, this puts it under visits. So I'm kind of thinking that it's, they just can't get where they're going to, or it's a bad link. I'm not quite sure, but I can check on that for next time.
That's so, I'm, let's say, I'm the patron and I'm on my, I'm on public access computers, and I'm sending a message to you, and I do something wrong with the email, and it comes back, and that's being captured?
No, I know, I see, I think this is.
Is this people trying to log on to our system?
That's what I tend to think, yeah. I tend to think that, but I don't know how, how that works. You know, I'm a little confused about that myself, so I will check with Lonnie on that.
Which leads to my other, my next question. When you go to visit duration, is that me on the public access computer, or is that maybe I'm home?
No, I think that's anyone visiting our website.
Okay.
Okay, whether, whether from home or elsewhere. And you know what? We should also have the stats for how many people actually logged on, whether they logged on using our wireless. We can get, we can poll those stats now, so I'll try to get those for you next month. Because that can be very interesting. And I just passed around additional circulation statistics that I got late, and I have this year and last year in some categories so you can compare.
Are you satisfied with the turnout on these classes? I see some low numbers here. I mean, is there any number that we're looking to get, or is there a way to sort of ramp that up? I think this is excellent. This is really great, great stuff, but, you know.
Free people for Excel, yeah.
Sometimes you can have ten people sign up and three show up.
Right.
I mean, but we are, part of the problem is if we don't always call to remind people. I know, but I also know we ordered for classes in Spanish and no one showed up.
But I mean, things like Excel, introductions to Excel. I mean, today, people really have an understanding. People who are not absolutely familiar with the program. And so I think that this number probably is like a fair number.
Oh, okay.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, right.
It's widely accepted program. People already know.
People know where people, it's a function.
There's probably a maximum number that they would take because the teacher can only handle so many, and there's so many computers to use. You know, I signed up for some classes up at Union College, and they were for senior citizens. Senior citizens are notorious for signing up and not showing up.
Then you can look at these intermediate numbers, and it's doubled.
Right.
So it's, you know, people got an understanding of introduction. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, right, 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 right.
Maybe that's, these numbers.
But not senior citizens.
No.
But we don't know who these could be seeing. People who are looking to improve their skills for a job or something.
Right, I mean, but because there's still people out there who don't know how to use a mouse.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I live with one.
So we need, we do continue to need a range of things.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah.
But I'm also looking to add other things, so, you know, if there are things that we are missing that, you know, how to make a YouTube video and things like that. We're open to suggestions in that way, to, you know, if there's something you want to learn or you're not learning, just let us know.
And who teaches these?
Primarily it's Lonnie, Lonnie Johnson.
Pretty good, too.
I've heard he's a very good teacher, yes, yes.
I was just thinking that maybe to ramp some of them, some sort of an incentive, okay? You come to some of these classes, and we'll have maybe a drawing, two hours extra time on the computer. Or maybe a gift card or something like that, you know, every two or three months.
A get-out-of-fines card or something like, something that doesn't really cost us anything, but is an incentive, yeah.
Yeah, like some more computer time.
Buy some partners at that mall. I don't see this.
Yeah. Let me know what you solicit.
I mean, the same thing true for some of these programs that are maybe wide independents that are, you know.
Well, usually for programs, I would say, it's refreshments.
Yes.
Well.
Sometimes the attendance.
But if we have a program that isn't attracting people, why would we have that program?
Well, I would still, we don't know, we don't know that because some of the programs, there's questionnaires associated with it, and others, we haven't, there's no evaluation that you could sort of write your opinion. So, you know, if you can't measure it, you can't manage it.
Right, right, exactly.
I think too, though, and I made the suggestion to the staff, that some of the programming should be held outside the quiet room on the second floor, where there's really nothing there right now. But if you're having a small program, it's not necessarily going to disturb anyone. If you think it's only going to attract ten to fifteen people, why not have it there? It looks so out of place. It looks so empty if you're upstairs. And you just, I heard about the book bingo thing, right? Right, right. Wouldn't you rather have been in a cozier place to do it? And then that way, people are coming by, they can say, oh, look, there's book bingo going on. Maybe I'll just join. A lot of places, they have, what's with the little tiles again?
Maja?
Maja?
Maja, right. And they'll just have that out in wherever, and people can join or not join. But it doesn't make it so intimidating that you have to go up another flight of stairs and see this big room, and it's like, oh, wait a minute.
Now, the quiet space, is it frequently used?
First of all, I know there's a little bit of an issue with the quiet space because the noise goes over the ceiling from the library. And their noise, if they're in there, can go over the ceiling. What its actual use is, I don't know. The last time I saw someone in there, she was actually on her cellphone, so I.
Over the years, it was originally a small computer lab that we had. It was a secondary computer lab for us. Then we have it for taxis and of course, that's where they use it. We are, Ms. Schmil and I look, are looking at if we can turn that into a small meeting room area instead of every meeting that comes, they put them up here.
Yeah, yeah.
Have them there, but we're looking at ways to make sure.
That the space is being used.
That's being used, but at the same time, we do something to buffer some of the sound if there is going to, a meeting taking place, so it doesn't.
Like if there are drop ceiling there, but you can't drop the ceiling without dropping the lights. Yeah, yeah.
So I'm looking at options.
Yeah, you know.
And that area, if people get too loud, you hear it nice and clearly at my desk. So it's just trying to balance everything out.
Yeah, look at what we have and make every space work efficiently, even if it means using it in a totally new way. So, you know, we're receptive to ideas in that way. And I'd just like to see that space that right now is very empty to have it do something else, especially for smaller groups.
A lot of the, like, the Excel program doesn't cost us any money because Lonnie is already a staff member, so. Um, because of that, I think it's still good that we offer it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We offer it, so, I mean, obviously, I'm more attendance.
Right, right, yes.
But I think maybe that's more of a marketing thing. How do we get the word out? Because we don't mail to everyone.
Right, right. But, you know, everything should be on our website, and we should be using all the organs that we can throughout the city and maybe throughout Union County to let people know, yeah.
But I still think it's a good thing that we.
I've gone to a few of them, and I think they've been very practical.
Okay, good, good.
Some good deliverables that I walked away with on.
Okay, good. That's what we want to have. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
You want to go back to the treasurer's report?
Um, nothing much to say. Everything's been pretty average. Well, we are forty-five percent through our fiscal year, and we've used twenty-eight percent of our budget, so we're in good shape so far. Ms. Schmil got that information to me today.
It was useful to me.
Yeah, no, that's useful to me too. So we're in good shape when it comes to that. Other than that, motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Can I, the question comparison, can I just, a couple of questions, is that part of this? I noticed in the automation, up with the items, software maintenance, we almost use all the money.
Usually, seriously, wants their money upfront.
Is that, that's why, okay, good, good. And the other was this new charge of fourteen that wasn't budgeted, the service agreement?
What?
Fourteen hundred and sixty-two dollars.
What page is that on?
Service agreement. Oh, okay.
By the automation.
Trying to remember what that was.
That might be a new one, I don't know.
Under service agreement.
For automation.
Automation, yeah.
No, I can't wait.
That wouldn't be those seven forty-fives that Edwin was working on. I know that was close to two thousand dollars. That's the closest I can come to it.
That's...
Because that was with, we made an agreement with Dell to come in and send the technology.
That is, that, okay, yeah.
Yes, that's what that was for.
Yeah, and that was unexpected because we didn't know that they were all going to suddenly start overheating and conking out on us, yeah.
When I look at the word automation, shouldn't that really be technology? Automation to me means.
I think it's probably just an old category. Yeah, it's probably an old categorization. I don't know how we change it by, you know, by some sort of fiat or whatever, but, you know, we can certainly look to change that and keep it on technology.
Yeah, it sounds more twentieth century anyway. Let's not push it to the twenty-first. We'll do it correctly.
Okay, don't get, don't.
Need a second?
Oh, no, we need a.
I need a second.
I second it.
Mr. Belgato?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Aratelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
Presentation and approval of bills for December thirteen.
I signed all the bills. Motion to pay the bills for December.
I second the motion. Okay. Mr. Belgato?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Aratelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
And that's it for me. I've enjoyed being treasurer. I look forward to hopefully serving at your pleasure.
Okay, uh, reading of communications.
Okay, that is a letter that Mr. Whitley has already referred to. The notice from the Union County Board of Chosen Freeholders that we have, our grant application for the improvement of the entryway has been, the funds are there for us to utilize. We have to present a budget to them yet, and we are working on that. I have someone, a carpet vendor coming in right after Christmas, and he'll give me some ideas of what kind of flooring we may or may want to go with. I reached out to a couple of.
Carpeting?
Well, you know, there's something called walk-off carpeting that I really like. It kind of grabs, it's like very fiber-y. It's very wiry. So when you walk on it, it grabs the dirt from your feet as you walk in.
Hmm, very good.
That I kind of like that, but I'll see what else. There's also what we have, there's also what we have at the Broad Street entrance, which is those little, what is that, the little dial, it looks like little dials, medallions on the floor. I don't know what that's called. That's the, that would probably be another option that we would go with. And I reached out, I haven't heard, though, back from a couple of door vendors to see about the sliding doors. But that's definitely, definitely what we want, yes, yes.
You warmed my heart.
That's all, communications?
That's all, yeah.
Okay, unfinished business.
Okay, I think that was just the security contract, which has already, there had already been a resolution, and now it's.
It has to be a resolution. It has to be approved.
Oh, we, okay.
There's a copy in the packets, but I'll read it. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Free Public Library of Elizabeth, New Jersey recognizes the need for security guard services at the main and Amora Library buildings. And whereas the treasurer of the Board of Trustees has certified that sufficient funds are available for this purpose and operating account numbered nine two one four one three five dash seven of the library budget. And whereas the purchase of security guard services was approved by the Board of Trustees, now therefore be resolved that the trustees of the Free Public Library of Elizabeth, New Jersey approves that the library director is here went, herewith authorized to award the contract for security service to Abreu Security thirty-one P, uh, Steyr Town Road, Clifton, New Jersey. President John Whitley.
Motion.
You need a motion to accept it, move that we accept this resolution.
Second.
Mr. Belgato?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
No.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes. I knew, um, security contract was only been an old business, but I wanted to discuss something that we discussed at last meeting with regards to electronic bill pay, I've been doing some research.
Okay.
With that, I had a conversation with the, the attorney and I had a conversation with other nonprofits, cause I look at us as a nonprofit. And, and I know a lot of executive directors and things and was questioning them about how they paid the bills. You know, and I have mixed reviews with regards, my question was to the attorney, was it a legal process, was it in the law that we had to pay our bills that way? Nobody can come up with, it's just a process that has been adopted and has worked well over time. I talked to other nonprofits who, say they do, they do it all the time, electronic bill pay. So it's a trend that it may be going through, but it's something that, I mean, I think it's not a closed deal with, you know, just us saying. Um, I, I spoke with the attorney, he told me to discuss with you too.
And I spoke to the auditor as well, yeah.
See, now that was what he recommended.
Yes, right, right.
We have a discussion with the auditor and what's best, what's best would work with the library with regards to that.
What's with the auditor?
And the auditor said that, um, he's aware of this, he thinks that maybe it's a little bit of a slippery slope that it's still considered best practice not to bank online at this point, because you have more of a checks and balance, you have, you require the two signatures and how you get the authorization of the two signatures, it's not really a process that's been developed yet. So the best practice is still to consider, you know, paper checks as we've been cutting them.
I agree with him.
Do any, do any of the vendors give a discount for prompt payment or anything on the bills we get?
Prompt payment.
Prompt, I, it used to be when I was doing contracts, we'd get like ten, ten, uh, one percent to ten days, that's thirty.
Oh, that's, uh, you're bringing something.
Yeah, right, and I'm wondering if, cause then electronic might pay because you'd save a little bit.
One ten, one ten net.
Electronic, it would do it a lot quicker, yeah, I'm just wondering if you noticed that.
Any other bill, I've never seen.
If you'd seen the written down bill, the payment terms.
Magazines, oh.
I think I've seen it.
Yeah.
That's the only one that I know of.
There's definitely a difference between private industry and government.
Yes.
But I was going, that we.
And I, I mean.
Cause we'd make sure we paid within that ten day period, you know, to get the discount.
We eliminated purchasers, I mean, we, based, you know, we develop scale, you know, and if there was a minor difference after the bill was received, that's.
No, I haven't.
They, they got paid right away.
Yeah, I haven't seen that.
You haven't seen, okay.
Okay, so then.
And electronic.
That's another reason I'm always for paper, make them mail us something.
Yeah.
So this could also be in the future.
Right.
Maybe it's something we can.
Okay.
Revisit, revisit.
Well, I think if it's been adopted by private industry, it's, it's gotta eventually.
Yeah, it'll work its way through, after our lifetime probably.
My concern with the whole, why, honey, I thought it was interesting that we would wanna consider those electronic, but.
I guess with the young.
Within our nonprofit guidelines.
Is there any?
Exactly.
Is it a law, is there, is it a concrete that we have to do it this way? And, and it was no, the answer was no.
But of course, the rules and regulations have not kept up with our age, in many ways, and the security and all those other ways, so.
But that, but that, excuse me, that was set before there was anything electronic.
Right, exactly, exactly. It may come down the pike, but I wouldn't say for another twenty years maybe, right?
Yeah, actually it'll be.
No, right, but I mean, for the rules, the regulations, the laws that govern it, I think could be ten, ten to twenty years away easily, yeah, right. Okay.
Okay, new business?
Election of officers.
Okay.
And we have our slate.
No, we don't need to vote.
Who's gonna make the one?
We just need to nominate, I mean, or is there anyone, there's no objection to, but we, um.
We agreed to this slate.
We agreed to, yeah, so.
And no one's really against this one. So we have to formally vote to it.
No, we just need a motion to accept the new slate.
Who, who, who are they again?
They're in your minutes.
Or did I miss something?
President Ms. Alvaro, Vice President Ms. Saratelli, Treasurer Mr. Belgato, Secretary Ms. Jackson.
I move that we accept the slate as presented.
Second.
Mr. Belgato?
I'm gonna vote myself, so yeah.
Mr. Freeman?
Mr., oh, go, okay, good.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
Oh, these are little cards.
Even have it.
Oh, all right.
That's, um, request for a meeting, so finance.
Yes, there has been a recommendation, I guess from the auditors, that we look into putting some funds in a CD.
Some are.
Some are, but yes, there's an additional set of funds that they have recommended.
Oh.
You want me to pull it out, I, I have it at my desk and, you know.
Well, you, you probably wanna wait till Ms., so Ms. Alvaro creates some finance.
Okay, all right, yeah, that's fine.
That's fine, it's committed before we, uh.
Well, she has to do that.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, you get a new finance estimate and we'll start going.
Yeah, okay, makes sense.
Okay, so there's extra funds available?
No, it's just.
It's a separate, yeah, they just kind of recommended that, I don't know.
And to look at it, like to have the committee look at it or something?
Yeah, right, right, right.
They used to have it years ago and then we didn't have it anymore.
Say that again, sorry?
I, I thought many years ago, they did have CDs.
We still have.
We still have. Well, hey, one hundred and one percent.
But that was what we were discussing, we brought it up at last meeting, like we were talking about banking electronic.
Right.
Because they, they have a higher yield with regards to money, making money off of our, you know, savings, but it was.
Some online banks, right, to.
IMG was higher than Bank of America.
Exactly.
So we were considering, that was a consideration, but again, in the, in the past, the board was adamant against not doing it electronically.
Oh, for CDs then, um, anyway.
But it's still, it's still a bank account.
It is, yeah.
It's still an account.
That's true.
And it's an electronic account, so the money's out there in the clouds.
We'll be using bank coins or something.
I think he knows it's floating arrest.
Um, okay, so we're good for that.
Okay, um, the request for the filming of a movie at the library, um, there's an actor, director, producer, raised, educated in Elizabeth, his name is Theo Perkins. I don't have any contact information for, from him, so, cause I was trying to reach him. Um, they came and they did a scouting thing here at the library, they wanna do a film that's gonna involve, um, autistic children or children that are somewhat developmentally disabled and they wanna shoot the film here, supposed to be just a short film, I think less than thirty minutes. Uh, they scattered the library, they liked the location, and then he came back to me and said, we'll need a twelve day, twelve hour shooting schedule. And I said, well, fine, we're open at nine thirty, nine o'clock in the morning.
Oh, he's talking about being empty?
No, he's talking about doing it on a Saturday. I said Saturdays, we're only open from nine to five, and he said, fine, I said, I can approach the trustees, but he never gave me a letter, he never gave me a formal request. So I said, you know, the trustees can decide, yes, we will allow the library to be open, but what fee are we charging for someone to come in for extra hours to do this? So I've tried to look for him online, I think I've located him, again, his name is Theo Perkins, if anyone knows anyone with that name, young name.
Where's his first name?
Was that Theo, Theodore, Theo, okay, there is an actor that I located, um, and I tried, you know, but there's, there are too many layers to go through IMBD or something like that to access him, so I haven't. But he's gonna call me back and I'm gonna say, well, you didn't give me a formal presentation, I had nothing I can tell, report back to you, but they were looking to do this the first Saturday in January.
Oh, no, they, he needs that presentation, he needs to have the proposal.
Right, yeah, right, right.
At least he should send you like an email.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I had nothing.
Something to read.
Yeah.
I had nothing. Yeah, I mean, he was a, he was a very nice young man, he came with a crew when they, they, they came through. Well, you know, no, he came with, you know, another producer and the director, you know, and they walked around and they liked what they had to see. You know, and I think it's a great opportunity, I said, why can't you divide it into two separate days, he said, because of the, the students that are involved, because of their disabilities, it will be better if we have a one day long shoot. And I can understand that, but again, I don't have anything.
It must be very difficult for them, excuse me, for them to, to be that long, they.
Why is the purpose of the film?
I, I can't imagine.
You couldn't get.
I'm not quite.
Is it a training thing or?
No, I think it's more, um.
Showcasing them?
Yeah, I think showcasing them a day in the life of or the, some of the, the situations that they encounter, I'm not quite sure what it is, but I know.
We get a percentage of the gross.
Documentary, I don't, I don't, a short document, maybe we'll get some credits next to.
But that needs to be detailed in its proposal.
Yeah, right, 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 yes, I, I agree.
It could be something exploitative.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
I mean, I'm not saying that.
He's not selling it that way, but you know, he shows up and they're, God, those are looking.
No, we totally, you know, we, we totally run all of that, but yes, yes, he, he needs to give us.
Yeah, generally, I think it'd be a good idea. Using as actors or his people or their actual patrons of the library.
I think they might be residents of the city, frankly.
I think it would be good to show the library off.
That would be very good, because.
Right, right, right.
So it's just in a good light at the film, yeah.
If I get a proposal for him, if I get documentation, I will approach you by email or whatever and I can send it out to you and if he, you know.
But I, I'm gonna be honest with you, that timeframe, I think is unfair to the library.
Yes.
By the first weekend, it's just unfair.
Well, if he, if he wanted it, he would have gone.
Yeah, he proposed it to us.
You know, I mean, that, you know, he has to show some respect, that's irresponsible and that, that would make you nervous about letting him do it.
Isn't that the producer's job?
Right.
Right, that's the producer's job.
Yeah, I'm not sure they would know the whole, how to do it formally.
Yeah, right, but I did say, I have to, I have to ask.
But I did say.
Yeah, I have to request that.
No, I know, but I'm thinking from a young man's point of view.
This is a learning experience, he will learn how to do it.
His timeframe doesn't fit, you know, and I don't think we should be able to move forward until we have that proposal and until January.
Then you can discuss it, yeah, yes.
Meeting comes up.
The first Saturday. The proposal he sends should have his insurance coverage.
Yeah, oh, yeah, right, 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 yes, yes, yes. You could, yes, the calendars came from the county, if you, anyone else wants a county, uh, photographs, help yourself there, that's why they're there.
Interesting.
And the additional thing that I didn't have a chance to add on, because I've been working on it all week, is, um, an adjustment to the rules of conduct that are part of our policy, I will explain why, um, first of all, I'll give you these, which the highlighted items, which include a couple of commas, the highlighted items are what I'm looking to change. The one particular thing I'm looking to change addresses what people cannot, what people can or cannot bring into the library in the way of personal possessions. The goal is to create a, the rules of the library, the rules behavior of the library are not posted anywhere here. So the staff and the security people are constantly in a position of going to people and telling them, you can't do that. But it can sometimes look like we're picking on people because, well, I didn't see the rules, I don't know what the rules are, how can you just tell me what the rules are and now I have to blindly obey them? So I created this double sided card, um, this is the dummy that's, that's in color and eventually will be printed in color, and these are, this is what I'm calling the short version of the rules of conduct, okay? And so then after I presented this, this, to the staff for discussion and feedback, there was still the question raised of how many things can someone log into the library? Because there are obviously people that come in with all their worldly possessions and they're in dubious condition and might be carrying along dubious add-ons, um, so the, and there's someone who comes in with a large suitcase whenever he's here. So the current rules for library conduct do not address that issue. So what I have and what I've just given you, and I guess unfortunately I've given away all my copies.
Uh, here's.
Oh, okay, yeah, you could pass that back down to me, thank you.
Okay, I think, okay, no, keep going, yeah.
So what I want to include, uh, right now it says, and what it, based upon Monica's suggestion, one, one will be the yellow side and the other will be the red side. So the part that's the darker highlight is the red card and the other side is the yellow card, just like in soccer. So I want to include, um, where it talks about, you will be warned that your behavior is inappropriate and if you continue in this behavior could be expelled if you leave personal possessions unattended or allow your personal possessions to block access to library materials or equipment. And then I would like to add oversized bags, bags with wheels and shopping carts are not allowed in library buildings. I pretty much copied that from New York Public. Now, I have to add that yesterday, when we had those people from the insurance company, Cognizante, who came in to talk about health insurance, they had little wheeled things with their laptops in them. But those little wheeled things can be picked up and easily carried with a handle, so there's a difference between something that can easily conduct, something you'll carry with one hand as opposed to a large piece of luggage that you're really just gonna drag along before.
Okay, I have issues with the language.
Okay.
Um.
I tried to call as much as I could from exactly what was in, already approved, I didn't try to, I tried not to modify that as much as possible.
I don't know, this, then who's enforcing this?
This would be the staff, this would be security, these could be available, because they're small cards, they could be available in small stacks at all of our public service desks that people walking by say, oh, what's this, I didn't know this, these would be incorporated in our welcome packets that we're beginning to assemble, so that every time you get a library card, you would get this included.
Where, where, where.
Well, signed or not signed, but yeah.
Where I'm coming from is, before you give these out, and I mean, I do believe there has to be some type of staff development with regards to.
Behavior?
Behavior and understanding and recognizing this behavior, because I just do not want staff people policing this library. It's not what their responsibility is, they're not the police. So before this even goes out, I believe there has to be some type of training, someone's coming from the outside.
Okay.
Discussing this, because when you say, uh, you will be asked to leave immediately if you are drunk.
Okay, or give the appearance of being drunk.
Giving the appearance of being drunk. I mean, I, I wanna be fair with, with this, because, like, I know people, the people I work with, the people I work with, the people I work with, they're here.
Oh, oh, I see, interesting, yes.
But the fact of the matter, they are not.
Right.
And there are, there are, there are conditions that force these people, I mean, that's just the way they function.
Sure, true, sure.
And we have, I mean, it's a sensitive issue, but I think it's sensitive, and I don't want the, the library to be caught up in a situation and, and like that and not being prepared.
Well, you know, like I say, if you look on the rules for conduct that I passed out to you, it is a number, item number four, which does say, under the influence of consume, sell, distribute any alcohol or beverages, of course, that we did amend, um, sleeping or giving the appearance of sleeping, you're drunk or have been drinking or consuming controlled substances. Um, is that first bullet point much different from or under the influence of consume, possess, sell or distribute?
I'm saying, the, when a, a library, I mean, an employee of the library.
Right.
Recognizes or think that they see someone who's inebriated.
Right.
What is the process of, of them being removed, immediately removed?
Well, I think you have to, wouldn't, wouldn't you have to call the security before you, you know?
Yes, usually.
But if you're, if you're saying there are medical conditions that might mimic.
Or, or, or they're.
There's odor, I mean, usually it's, there's an odor.
I mean.
Okay, usually there's extinct odor, when one gentleman fell out of his chair recently, there was the beer can rolled out of his pocket as he fell over.
But that, but that's possession of.
Right.
Yes, but that's still not, but that's still, you're not supposed to have that in the library.
No, I'm saying possession is something, and you find a beer can, uh, that's causing that, you see that, there's no, but when you have, uh, you're looking at an appearance.
Right.
Are they trained to make that judgment call of, he's drunk, she's drunk?
Usually we base it upon really the lowest criteria, which is that there, there's an obvious alcoholic, right, an obvious alcoholic odor.
Even a clothes smell.
Now, who tells this person they have to leave?
Well, I think that should be up to the security.
Yes, that's usually the librarian in charge.
Every librarian will tell you someone to go.
Should be the librarian in charge or myself, Monica or, and security, where usually, there's usually two of us who would approach someone under this.
Playing devil's advocate, now you have this inebriated person, you tell them to get out.
Right.
Are you causing something extra and the person doesn't wanna leave? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, yes.
That's what my, that's what my concern is, I don't want this problem to be between the library and pitch.
Well, I have a question.
The library staff.
Or Monica, cause.
Do you understand? I, I, security, is that security's responsibility? I wouldn't want a lot of, for a professional person to get involved.
Well, no, but I think.
We don't want security making the decision, that should be, that should be the lawyer.
Well, the whole point is if you go over to someone and who's obviously drunk, right, and you say, you're not supposed to say, excuse me, by the way, when you tell someone the rules, you're supposed to say, by the way, you may not be aware, but there are rules for behavior when you're in this library and here are the rules and you are currently in violation of the rule that says you're not supposed to be drunk in the library. And I have to ask you to leave, right, 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 and then you feel real bad and you go.
Security?
Yes, right, exactly. What we need to do is have an environment that everyone knows they're treated the same. And what has happened a lot is people have been allowed to get away with a lot of behaviors that aren't appropriate, including being drunk or sleeping or having very offensive odors. And I have no problem with having people come here, everyone is welcome here, but everyone who comes must follow the same rules. We can't have one set of rules for one population, another set of rules for the other population.
That's not what I'm saying.
Right, 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 but I'm saying, yes, right.
What I'm saying is if, you making, uh, you make this rule, uh, we need rules, I'm not against the rules. My thing is liability issues with regards to people, you gotta understand a population is people in this, um, in the city with putting a staff person making that decision.
But the staff question isn't, you, you have.
But, but what I'm, what I'm suggesting or recommending to this board is that maybe we do some type of training or get some outside training where there are things that can be recognized, because, you know, and there should be some sensitivities and things like, I, I, I just, I just.
Well, you're talking about like with, with the police.
I just don't wanna get these people in trouble.
Where they, where they get someone who's really ill and they.
Everything with the library and somebody.
Oh, yeah, right.
Did that set certain, the result of that, did that set criteria?
Can we fuss on that bill?
Yeah, that was in Morristown Public Library.[1793.42] Yeah, that was in Morristown Public Library.
There was a thing in Morris Town where, like, suing, he was getting thrown out of the library.
He had also problems with New Jersey Transit.
Right, right.
Well, he was a, he was a habitual sewer, that was his.
But he also, I think, had an offensive body odor.
Right.
So the idea is if, your rule is that you cannot disturb other people by your presence. I'm saying that if it's, my reaction to that is if you're offending any of my senses, if you're too loud, if you're too smelly, if, you know, you're doing anything else that's verbally, you know, displaying yourself in inappropriate ways, those are all disturbing the public. So I don't care if it's smell or it's noise, or like, you know.
I'm coming from a place I worked in, I have a, I don't know if I wanna say, the people I deal with who are not from this country. They have a natural body odor. They don't suppress their natural body odor. I have to tolerate that.
Right.
They don't use deodorants.
We got that work.
It's just not what they do culturally. That doesn't make them unclean.
Right.
But do you understand this? What is my brain sitting in the library not to say thanks to that person?
Right, well, it's one thing.
I'm just saying, I don't, my person, I'm not dealing with, I'm talking about a staff member approaching someone, telling them they smell. And they have to go.
It would be, okay. It would be more like if, if I'm sitting where I'm sitting and I can smell Mr. Valgada from here. I'm not talking about if you're sitting right next to me. You could be aware of anyone if you're sitting right next to me, but I'm saying if you're disturbing. And we have patrons coming up to us and saying, that person over there has, I can't, you know.
It's, it's touchy to me.
Yeah, I understand it's touchy, but I'm also told that we're sitting less people who are your ordinary citizens, let us say, that won't come here because people smell and they're drunk. That's the other side.
How is it, excuse me, how is it handled right now?
How is it healed right now is that people seem to be able to get along, get away with whatever they want. You know, they may be reprimanded one time and, but then will still come back. There's no consequences. And people have learned that there are no consequences. So they abuse, they abuse the staff and they, they abuse the fellow users of the library.
By no means am I, I completely understand that we need rules. I understand that we need, there, people have to, there's a level of how they conduct themselves. We, we need to have that. My concern is the staff approaching these people. And getting my issue, it has nothing to do, I do believe that people should.
Right.
Behaving.
Perform, perform to the norm.
My concern is the interaction with staff telling someone they have to leave. That's what, now, if we can come up with a formula or something where, and everybody is on board.
Dudes and dumbs.
Dudes with staff dealing with patrons, because I don't, my issue is escalating.
Oh, I, I agree.
But if the, if the, if the library in charge is the person, you know, it's not the whole staff.
Right, right.
If they all have to go to a supervisor.
Yes, yes.
Now we're talking, now I'm beginning to understand.
Right, right.
Someone is designated, my thing is, you smell.
No, no, yeah, no. There usually is a chain of command regarding that.
That needs to be.
I guess it is a slippery slope because we are a public building. And like a public school, like we have some students, for example, like Mr. Whitely actually, you hit it on the head. Some of them, it's not that they are dirty, it's that.
We had that.
Maybe deodorating. It's not part of their.
Right, right.
Their, their culture doesn't suppress a natural body odor.
We have people coming in. We have people coming in from all over the world. And they, oh, we sent them to my office because no one else could stand them. No, seriously, there were people that, that, they were dressed really nice, but they.
Are you gonna have this vetted by our legal people? That's what I'm.
Most of this is already, this is existing, this is already.
Yeah, most of this is.
Existing, I've only changed the highlighter parts.
Okay, I, I, oh, I thought this is a new creation.
No, 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 why?
I'm gonna refine.
But we are gonna still let it, the legal people, because there may have been some changes in how.
Yeah, I don't know when this was originally, right.
The history of cases on this with other institutions.
This is a very old document.
I think it was.
1991, I think.
But that should be vetted.
Yeah.
But that's.
As you mentioned.
I just, it causes conflict. I just, I see it, I see it both sides.
See, I may also, I don't know, the oversized bags, like, how oversized are we talking?
I wanna ask you a question.
A, a large suitcase.
If somebody comes in, if somebody comes in with, say they've been shopping and they have a shopping cart or something, can they just check it at the desk?
No, we can't be, we can't have the staff be responsible, no, no. Well, those orders are fine, right. But very specifically, it says, shopping carts or, I forget.
Because I also, like, I had a book bag that was just as big as this one and it had wheels on it.
Yeah, I know, but you can pick it up.
Yeah.
Right, and I think that's the difference. Because as I say, the two people that came in yesterday for the healthcare thing, they had wheeled things with their laptops and things like that, but they could easily pick them up when they went up or down the stairs. We have a lot of.
But that's, but that's why the library, that's, that's business, you know, in terms of dealing.
But people do come in with their, like, the laundry, laundry.
I'm coming to talk to you about a marketing issue or something like.
That's not a library customer, that's a business case.
But what exactly today, with these rules of conduct as an action item, what is it that you're asking?
Okay, under number 13, to say oversized bags, bags with wheels, and shopping carts are not allowed in library buildings. Also, I've added capped water bottles under number 14. Capped water bottles will be permitted but must not be consumed at computer terminals.
And then you're taking out 18?
I, I would like to ultimately take out, we're right now, we're allowing that. We're allowing people to put in their headphones and we're allowing people to use their.
That was never taken out of this policy when we changed the later policy.
Right, so that's why I'd like to take that out of it. And elsewhere, I think I've just put in a couple of commas and cleaned up a little of the grammar. But the substantial things are 13 and 14 and the deletion of 18. Let me just add too, there are two things that we're looking at. We're looking to do some programming or outreach to our homeless communities. Because we're, we're aware that they're in here. And I don't wanna make our homeless population feel that they are unwelcome, but they must follow the same rules of everyone else. So there's a library in Dallas that did something called Conversation and Coffee or something like that. And I shared that with the staff and I've had actually a pretty positive response that people wanna do this. And we're looking for ways to do this. And one of the things that would do would send the message is that you are welcome here, but there are still rules that apply to you just as there are rules that apply to everything else, everyone else. The other thing is that through the libraries of Union County, there will be a staff development opportunity at Springfield Library where they're gonna talk about dealing with mental health issues in your populations. And if you want, you can prove that everyone on the staff who's scheduled to work can go that day and we will close the library for a couple of hours and do that. Right now I have at least three people who have expressed interest. I think it might be valuable to everyone, but I'm not, I have not at this point addressed this as something that I think everyone on staff should go to. That's supposed to be at Springfield in February. So there's still a little time to think about that if you're interested in making that up. I asked to have it here, you know, Springfield and Elizabeth were the two libraries that offered space.
If someone comes in and I get, they're older, they have a slight odor, but they look, obviously they look a certain way. I just don't want that, those people to be, you know, targeted.
No, and that's not, that's not what it is.
That's somebody being really, really offensive.
Someone smelling of urine and being in here every day for every, you know, every day.
When you, when you hit on something particular, when you say the homeless population, that's, that's, they come here.
Yes, and they do fall asleep.
And it's pathetic.
That is something that I think is proactive with the library.
That's what we wanna do, right, right.
I see that.
Yes.
You know, my, and, and I'm all for that, but my concern, like I said, and I'm saying it over again, is just the, the staff. So if we have put it, and do we need to put that rule of conduct of how staff should?
Well, that, that's, that, you're right, that's training for the staff. Because just the other day, or maybe even today, Alexis and I had a discussion about, you know, someone sleeping on the table, you shouldn't, someone shouldn't be going up to the, up to them right away and saying, hey, wake up. That's not how you do that. It should be like knock, knock on the table. Hello? And you do that three times and then you, you know, just gradually get a little bit louder to let them know they're doing something that you're correcting. You're not trying to startle them out of a nice slumber or anything like that. You're trying to do it in the best way possible.
I had a situation, I have a twin brother. Brother who looks just like, walks this way, and he came, he comes to the library often, but he took his shoes off. And sitting at the desk, doing whatever he did, I'm getting three phone calls. You at the library with your shoes off?
What are you doing?
Like, why, why are you at the library? I'm not at the library.
How do we know you're?
But, I mean, but do you, like.
Yeah.
You're gonna get a lot of questions with staff training. We're not even touching.
But, but the fact is, we're not changing any of the rules. It's like the two lines.
But it's just a matter of knowing what you need. But what you're doing, you're talking around.
Mr. Whitely?
Yes.
And then creates, you know.
Yes, 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 yes. But the staff would really like some backup.
Sure.
So, so that would be the question, if you wanna move these changes, I can leave this out. I can leave out the stuff about the extra baggage, just leave it as it is for now. That's fine, I can do that. I just was aware that the staff had asked me for that. But I'm happy to just use it as you see it on the cards in front of you now. And we can discuss and vote on this table list for now.
Personally, I wanna, I, I, I would consider this as a first draft, I'm sure we're gonna, I.
We have so many policies to rewrite, yeah. I didn't wanna tickle it, yes.
I just don't wanna say adopt this and then, you know.
I will come.
And amend.
If you wanna have a policy committee meeting, I can bring to you policies from other libraries and we can look about redoing the whole thing if that's what you wanna do.
We have that on policy committee next year.
New policy committee.
Okay.
Listen, this is my last term, this is my last month, it's gonna pleasure.
Is that why you're smiling so much?
Okay, so we will, we will table this for now. Okay, and I will create these for now as in the format that you see them tonight without the added. Oh, the capped water bottles is okay though?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Because you do have.
They're doing that, right?
Like the seniors, don't we offer coffee for seniors or something?
I'm not right now, no.
Senior space or something, I remember us having a discussion about.
Oh, okay, I'll worry this one.
No, what I'm saying, if you have coffee, you know, water, anything.
And then when you're gone, it's gonna, yeah, I know where you're going.
So do we have?
Um, to include that, I guess, yeah.
With the update for?
Number 14, capped water bottles.
I moved that we accept number 14.
Oh, no, 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 can't we do this as accepted?
Oh, I thought, oh, you wanna just do the whole thing? Okay, and then we'll look at the whole thing again.
Individual when we discuss that. But if you wanna accept this as a change.
Um, but so you, would you prefer me not to put in that thing about the large bags right now? Because even if you're accept, if you're accepting the whole thing?
No, but.
Shopping carts?
I didn't, I didn't have a problem with the old.
Oh, okay. You have to come on the drunk issue.
You don't understand what.
No, no, I, I certainly, I certainly can, okay. The, the feeling right now is that people are allowed to get away with things in the library that they could not get away with on a public street. And why are we allowing that?
And they should be, yeah.
Yeah, right. So, okay.
Okay, we need a second, second. Okay. Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitely?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, this is.
So this will be on the agenda for the next.
What? Action?
This whole thing needs to be revisited.
You showed interest and I recommended that you be the chairperson. You remember that, right?
Yeah, people volunteers or he who speaks up gets volunteered, yes, yes.
Oh, we haven't gotten any. Okay, we're done with all this?
Mm-hmm, and your business?
Comments from the public?
Absolutely. Well, good evening, my name is.
Yeah, okay, that's what I said, your name, your address.
Marta Fernandez, I live in 364 Fay Avenue, no cameras please. I've been a member, patient of this library for over 10 years. Mr. Keen was here when Mrs. Key was here. I've never had an occasion to come to a meeting. That means that the library was running pretty well with your staff, the way they handle things and the supervisors. I've listened to you for an hour and a half and a lot of those issues I have seen. But I'm here specifically to speak about the fees on the printing. The color printing you raised to 50 cents and your printers are not operating properly. They're offline, your computers don't operate properly, and I think that that's an unfair hike, it's over 50% hike. And your black and white as well went up from 15 cents to 35. That is too much for this community. That's one issue. So I would like for you to reconsider a moratorium on these fees until at least you fix the printers. You're charging us for things that are not working properly. Having said that, technically, the computers don't work. I come to this library every day. And I'd like for this board to know that I was a board member of the Water Valley Commission in Las Vegas and a board member of Community Health Centers of Northern Nevada. And yes, I do know how meetings are supposed to run. Like I said, I've had a good relationship and all of the issues you've mentioned, I'm very well aware of. And I'm going to add just two more things and then I'm going to get up and leave. One is the issue of the homeless population, and I'm very, that's something that's very close to me. I have people that are suffering and I am a big supporter of the free public libraries in the United States of America, whatever town they are in. I'm a person that when I go shopping, I go visiting, I go traveling, I'm always looking at a book, reading a book or entering a library somewhere, whether I'm in Nevada, whether I'm in Phoenix, whether I'm in California, some little town in Alabama. So I have seen how well libraries work. And this is not one of the best functioning libraries, you're very old, okay? You're not up to date. I've had discussions with Edwin over the years. And one of my pet peeves is you need to update your service. There's a lag, the, the computers are giving us error messages. I'm on Twitter two hours a day and I come every day and I come at all hours. And I, I get so frustrated, it's incredible. Having said that, I happen to be the person that was here when one of the homeless personnel, excuse me, patrons came in and the odor was, it was so acrid that it stayed in my nostrils long after she had left. And I was aware of her because she had been at the chicken place across the street. And I did call Alexis, because I've had that kind of relationship here with the, with the personnel here. And I said, Alexis, you know, there are the laws regarding the homeless that this board mentioned of the case in Morristown. Okay, you can't just stop them from coming into the library. They have a right to come to this library as you so, you know, aptly spoke on. And there has to be a solution, which is to ask them to leave nicely and come back after they've showered because the smell is offensive. But you don't say those words, you say other words. You treat them with the same respect you would treat a millionaire because they're a human being. Yes, the stench was awful. I mean, every time I think about it, I'm like, oh my God. But it's not the library's fault, it's not her fault, she's mentally ill. Okay? What, what I suggested to Alex, I said, listen, take the Lysol and have the spray, which they did because the odor remained, it remained all on the second floor. Wherever she walked, she had not bathed and she was, the stench was feces and urine, old. So it was really, really bad. And I watched the people here, basically I have to say, Ms. Epig is absolutely wonderful. She, she has a manner of speaking to the patrons and the guests at this library and getting things done and doing it very nicely. I've also seen some other staff members approach patrons in a way that you mentioned, where you're not being the most pleasant and then it causes friction. And then you're talking about the police coming when all of this could have been avoided. So you're hitting some very good points. So I'm done saying what I had to say, I'm gonna ask that you please consider freezing that price at 35 cents and 15 cents until everything is working beautifully so we can get beautiful copies. And I also wanna know how you justify that raise. So I'll be here at your next meeting, you give me the answer then, okay? Because it's time, it's time to go and I know you guys wanna go home. And I had my say, this is what I stayed here to say to you. My concern was mostly the price increase, okay? And just make sure that the young staff is well trained downstairs. Because on one of my accounts, it said I owe $2.85 and I said, that's impossible. I always make sure I pay up or I stay on top of it. And there's a young, new person, and of course, one of your older personnel came and adjusted it. That's it, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.